Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council. Please attend the call meeting of the city council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, July 24th, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider our motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chandler?
Just to... Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As we start your public work session agenda this evening, we started the list with hot topics. I would like to make a small amendment to the agenda and actually bring forth a presentation, just a quick one. The subject matter recently, and I think the mayor might have mentioned it too, that we experienced just in this last week or so at the PDC, has been the subject matter of uranium mining in Virginia. If you remember about this time last year, Josh Etheridge, who was a summer analyst with us, actually did a presentation before this council on the subject matter of uranium mining. What you had decided at that time is there was a lot of studying going on, and with that studying, you really had made a decision to kind of wait and see what some of the research reports would be. Of course, to date, we know that at the state level, there are still some studying going on. The final has not been provided, and there has been some question raised. Most recently, as we've come out of the PDC meeting at HRPDC within the last week, the city of Virginia Beach has made a request of Hampton Roads localities to pass resolutions opposing any type of uranium mining in Virginia. So tonight, what we have for you is we have Mr. Patrick Wales of Virginia Uranium Incorporated. This is actually the entity that would be doing the mining in Virginia. I think if we remember from about a year ago, we're possibly talking about maybe one of the largest deposits of uranium that may exist in the world, definitely the United States. So for tonight's presentation, we're going to have Mr. Wales come forward and just kind of chat with you in terms of where their research is to date. There is no action for council to take this evening, and if council should ultimately decide it wants to take some action, other than your previous action, to kind of wait and see and see what the results are, you would be in position to do that. Of course, we're not proposing any action tonight, any resolution for council's consideration, but we thought it would be timely. We were able to confirm this appointment this afternoon, about 2:30 or so, to actually be able to get them here to chat with you, so at least you will have the latest information as you would weigh your decisions going down the line.
We're good.
Okay? So without any further ado, if I could recognize Mr. Patrick Wales of Virginia Uranium Incorporated. Mr. Wales, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Patrick Wales. I'm a geologist and project manager with Virginia Uranium Incorporated. We do control the single largest deposit of uranium in the United States, the seventh largest in the world. Just to put the size of that deposit and its energy potential in perspective for you real quickly, it's 119 million pounds of uranium in the ground and would have an ability to power Virginia's four nuclear reactors at their current needs for the next 75 years. So as far as BTUs is concerned, it is the single largest energy resource in the Commonwealth of Virginia, by far, bar none, hands down. I have a bachelor's degree, a master's degree in geology. For the last seven years, I've worked in the fields of environmental and exploration geology. I'm actually from the Danville area, which is a few minutes away from where the deposit is located in Pennsylvania County. And, you know, it's been a great privilege for me to be able to come back to my home area of Virginia and work on a geologic project of such local, state, and national significance. Our area suffers from chronic unemployment, persistent economic disadvantage, and so this is no small feat to discuss these issues in our part of Virginia or in yours. I've traveled a great distance today to emphasize that we're very serious about addressing the concerns that have been articulated by the city of Virginia Beach regarding our project. With modern mining technology and regulations, our project represents a unique opportunity for national energy independence, and that is because the United States currently imports over 90% of the uranium we need to power our clean, reliable, affordable nuclear power plants. This can also provide statewide benefits and a potential economic lifeline for an area of the Commonwealth that desperately needs the jobs and economic activity. However, I want to be explicitly clear on this point, and that is that none of that should ever come at the risk of health and safety of our community, where we live and raise our families, or yours. The central concern that's been articulated by the city of Virginia Beach relates to the storage of tailings. Tailings are the leftover material from the mining process, and specifically, Virginia Beach is concerned about the effect of a catastrophic weather event on the tailing storage and whether such an event would cause a release of these tailings into a nearby river, which ultimately flows into Lake Aston, which is where Virginia Beach gets a portion of its water supply. Their concerns arise primarily out of a study that was commissioned by the city and completed by Michael Baker Engineering regarding such a catastrophic event. The Baker study relies on a model that's fundamentally flawed in a couple simple and easy-to-understand ways. First, the model assumes that the tailings would be placed in above-ground storage impoundments. Second, the model also assumes that tailings facilities would be located directly adjacent to one of the local rivers. Neither of these assumptions are considered industry best management practice nor are likely to be approved by federal regulators. I've provided you a copy of the city of Virginia Beach's resolution. I encourage you to read specifically lines 48 through 52, which clearly states that the Baker study model assumes that we would store tailings above grade, we being Virginia Uranium. The resolution goes on to state that if Virginia Uranium were to use below-grade storage, the risks as articulated by Virginia Beach would be, quote, "significantly reduced," unquote. The view that below-grade tailing storage would address the central concerns of Virginia Beach has been articulated by many city officials on numerous occasions. I've included as well a letter with my remarks that was sent recently to the city of Virginia Beach by our chairman and CEO, in which we commit to placing tailings below grade, absent a determination that a more stringent and more protective tailings disposal method is available. The company, our company, believes that this is the best tailings management method to address the concerns of your community and to protect ours. We are very clear on this point. As you may know, the governor has impaneled a work group from various agencies to develop a regulatory structure to present to the public in the General Assembly this fall. It is anticipated that this work group will present a strict regulatory framework that will address a wide range of issues and concerns. It is our hope that your body will further examine the commitments that our company has made on important safety issues, as well as examining the forthcoming regulatory product that will be produced from the governor's work group before making any decisions regarding your view of our prospects at the Coles Hill Project in Pennsylvania County. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, we want to continue to renew our commitment to work with each one of you and your staff on any aspects of this important issue, and I thank you very much for your time today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wales, for coming. Any questions, any amendments to council?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmen, we'll go ahead and take up a few hot topic items. The first one I'd like to do would be an update on the charters. Of course, we've done the management plan document, and I'd like to bring forth Ms. Justine Jones for a minute to just give you an update. We just want to kind of keep the progress that we're making in front of you as we start working towards the first quarterly report that you'll get on the information that we're putting together. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wright.
Hey.
Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of council. This evening, I will update you on the status of the project charters, which is the work plan for the FY 13 management plan and is the administrative footprint that keeps track of all the projects on that plan at any given point in time. It also ensures that each project is making incremental progress throughout the course of the year. And you may recall, being first introduced to the management plan last month, the plan has since grown slightly from 75 to 81 projects. And the first draft of the charters has been completed. With the number of projects currently on the management plan, other than requests that we received from you and amendments and changes in laws or regulations that would necessitate changing a particular project, the management plan is complete. We are now advancing to the second stage of the project charters composition, in which the goal is to finalize all the charters within the next couple weeks. At that point, you'll be able to access an electronic copy of the management plan and the project charters. That completes my update.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, I'd like to next call Mr. Brandon Godfrey to the table, and two updates that he wanted to deal with would be the Splash Park is one, and also the situation that we've been working through in the last week or so about grass cutting, in terms of our gateways.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Yes, the Splash Park now has been open just over two weeks, and I wanted to update you on a couple of things. We've had some issues or questions and concerns about where to purchase the single passes and the punch card passes. They are currently being sold here in City Hall in the treasurer's office, as well as the Parks and Rec office. They're also sold at the visitor information center at North Landing. We did not initially plan to have onsite sales because of the issue with security of the staff, and we just didn't want to have any cash transactions going on at the Splash Park facility. We're rethinking that now, looking at some options for the cost and feasibility of putting a token vending machine inside the facility, which would make it secure. It would be something that would be, it would accept cash and dispense single pass tokens, but we're developing that, looking at several different models, and we need to consult with the police department and get their advice on security. So that's something that will make access to the Splash Park a little more convenient. And there was also a question about how the price of the admission was arrived at. We looked at both the cost of the operation of the facility and we looked at some other aquatic facilities in the area prior to recommending the $2 per visit price that was adopted when this biennial budget was adopted. And there aren't really any identical facilities to compare to in terms of a freestanding Splash Park, but we looked at the city of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, which have aquatic facilities, and their single pass, day pass rate was $5 per visit. Hampton has $1.50 per adult and a $1 for youth day paths visit. So the combination of that, and again, the cost of operation, led us to settle on the $2 per pass visit. And that's all I had for the Splash Park. Yes, sir.
Look, first of all, can you give us a little backdrop as far as the Splash Park, the funding and all? This is PRHA funding through the HOPE-6 piece, and how much was that whole piece, and how did we come up with that? Just quickly.
That was constructed by PRHA as part of their HOPE-6 development in Westbury, and so they bore all the capital cost, and I can't give you a dollar amount. I'd have to check with PRHA to tell you what that is.
I think it's 1.2, I think I asked that. But, yeah, Mr. Moody?
Yeah, Brandon, getting back to the admission part, I shared with council and the manager about a citizen who went there with a five-month-old baby and was charged, I guess, the $2 admission. Obviously, the baby's not going to walk around at five months, and the mother had to carry the baby. Somewhere along the line, I think when we set these admissions, common sense has to come into play, you know, whether it's, you know, children below 12 months. I don't know where that level is, but I would hope that everybody in this room would think that you don't charge a five-month-old baby full admission price. I think it's inconscionable to do that. So how are we going to address that?
You know, as we start to have some, several months of operation under our belt with some histories of what the customer base is like, we can look at maybe adjusting some policies for under a certain age is free. I mean, it wouldn't, it almost wouldn't make sense to break it in half. It's just $2 to begin with, so we'll look at that and see what the numbers are and how many times we're having on a regular basis infants coming in.
I mean, do we, do we really have to do a whole lot of study to, for common sense to come into play, that you don't charge five-month-old babies full admission price? I mean, do we need a consultant for that? Do anybody want to hire a consultant?
I think you're right on point. I guess the question becomes, you know, was the charge for a five-month-old or was the charge for the adult?
It was for both.
Okay.
Because we require children under nine to be a company.
I spoke to the lady involved, and she's a military wife, the wife of a SEAL, Navy SEAL to start with. Not that that has anything to do with it. I don't care if she was the wife of a city council member or a bricklayer. A five-month-old baby shouldn't be charged full admission. And, you know, before the summer is out, I like to see that adjusted, unless there's dissent from any of my colleagues.
No.
Dr. Edmonds?
I agree. Thank you, Mayor. I agree with what Councilman Moody had said about the baby, certainly. But I also want to know, how is the attendance been?
Yeah, I don't have numbers for you for the first two weeks, but it has been slower during the week. It's picked up on weekends. We've had, we've been able to have some of our summer camp folks come in during the mornings, but in the afternoons is when most of our paying customers are, and it really just depends on the weather.
I've been asked by several persons who want to bring some youth there, and they want to know if there are any special youth rates. I didn't know what to tell them, who to direct them to, so...
$2.
Just $2.
Yes, sir.
You mean like a group, like if there's a daycare, somebody that's got 10 or 15 kids, and they couldn't get some kind of...
Right.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. The next item is the mowing issue. We've had some issues with the right-of-way and median mowing in the last several weeks. Just to sort of give you a little background on the mowing contracts that the Parks Division administers, there are several different types of mowing contracts. The two largest ones are for 10- and 7-day cycle mowing, and those address the largest streets and the medians and the right-of-ways in those streets. The 10-day one, which is the one that, the 10-day cycle mowing contract, which is the one that we've had some issues with most recently, covers Portsmouth Boulevard, Greenwood Drive, Cavalier Boulevard, Victory Boulevard, a portion of Frederick Boulevard, Effingham, London, a portion of High Street, Town Point Road, West Norfolk, and Cedar Lane. We had a contractor who just left the job in late June, and so at that point, we were going back to our bid list and getting the next lowest bidder under contract. And so that took a couple of weeks to get, first of all, to make sure that the next lowest bidder was capable of doing the work, and then we got them started last week. So that left them with a fair amount of catch-up work to do. They just finished Portsmouth Boulevard yesterday. They're working on Greenwood Drive today and tomorrow. They should finish it up on Thursday, and then they'll go on to Cavalier Boulevard and Victory Boulevard. But that will, you know, as soon as they get done with that list, they'll, obviously, they'll be right back starting again on the 10-day mowing cycle.
Okay. Dr. Edmonds?
Mr. Mayor, Brandon, I'd just like to ask a question. On Rotunda Boulevard, on Rotunda Street, where you turn off of Greenwood Drive and there's, you're going down Rotunda toward Crystal Lake Estates?
Yes, sir.
There's a fence there that separates the interstate, and the bushes and the shrubbery that grows over that fence onto Rotunda has become a hazard because it's difficult to see the signs or anything. And I've been trying to find out who's responsible for clearing that. I used to see the sheriff and the inmates come out to do it. I don't know whose responsibility it is. I'd like to know so that we could see what the citizens out there can do to get that taken care of.
I'll look into it, and I'll follow that up.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
Brandon, thanks for the update. I actually had a citizen who had previously complained, I think earlier in the week, that noticed the crew out there, and so they could see the curb for the first time in a month or so. So that's good. Where does the, and I'm going back to, I guess, the finer points, the gateways to the city. You know, all of us in this room probably drive around the city a lot, and I don't like what I see, quite frankly, and I think it involves more than just grass cutting. That's deplorable, or has been up until now, and I see a lot of trash at our gateways, and I don't expect an answer, and I'm not throwing you under the bus that's more involved than, you're certainly not out there picking up trash and doing that yourself, but I think somewhere along the line, we've got to come up with a plan to get this city looking better than it looks today. I know we take spells in talking about it, but talk's not going to get it done. We need a plan, whether it's adopt a gateway or what it is. You know, the sheriff certainly offers inmate help, and I know that, I don't think that's the only solution, but that can be a clog in the wheel to help get it done. But we need to get our heads together and find out how we can not just cut the grass, but how we can make this city a prettier city. You know, visitors form impression of the city, just like they do to each of us when you walk into a room. You know, you make, that first impression sticks with you. And right now, I don't like what I see as far as Portsmouth's first impression. It's just not there. Our curb appeal on a scale of 1 to 10 is down about a 2 or a 3. So we've nowhere to go but up. So hopefully, somebody can realize the importance of that and present us with a plan on how we can beautify our city. So that's my thoughts.
Yeah, you want to address that?
I'd just mention one piece of it, I think. At one point, we had a pretty active, and council probably knows this better than I did, the Clean City Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that body's kind of become defunct over a period of time. I know we had staffing that was literally assigned to, that worked out of the manager's office, and remember, a couple of years ago, we actually lost that position in the management efficiency study. So, you know, a large part of the rah-rah, you know, behind driving and making sure that, you know, we had some particulars. So if you would like, you know, we can dig out the history of what we had and bring that back and at least, you know, get council up to speed in terms of what it was.
Sounds good.
And then see how we might be able to enhance it. And it's one of those things, I mean, when money is tight, you know, we have to make decisions at those times.
Well, you know, your image is money. And I go back to the beautiful sign that was on the gateway entering Portsmouth from the downtown tunnel that a car demolished, and we were told that's, you know, obviously that's nobody's fault but the driver, but that's been months and months ago, and...
A year.
A year ago, the mayor just said. And we were told, well, that'd be an insurance deal, but it's nothing there but some weeds greeting people as the enter Portsmouth from the city of Norfolk. So, you know, it's things like that, that just, that attention to detail, it just doesn't seem there. Another thing, and I'm kind of on my high horse...
On that roll.
You know, Midtown, we had a great announcement about Chick-fil-A coming there that's going to be like the prototype of the new rollouts for Chick-fil-A's. But in the Midtown area, we've got numerous former banner posts, setting, some of them cracked, all of them without banners. It just sends a communication that it's an unkept area, and we're an unkept city, and I don't like that. I'm a native of this city, and, you know, we need to get the shoes shined and, you know, the tie on straight and the hair combed. Right now, we're looking pretty wild, pretty ugly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to piggyback on what Councilman Moody said. I don't know whether I'm on my high horse or low horse, but I do believe that there needs to be that commission back in commission.
It needs it.
Because I think it'd be a good thing to help us move and prioritize things that we might need to be done in the city, because I've been seeing a lot of that too around.
True. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. One of the things, that was a beautiful commission, and I commend you for bringing it about, because our city gave a lot of credence to the beautification of our entrances, our exorcisms, and the streets that we travel on. We sort of got away from that, but that's the first impression that people have of your city when they enter. We like the gateways. It tells how much pride we have in what it is that's going on. And that was put out there, Bill, if you remember, every committee, every community had somebody who was represented on that committee, and they did it in a routine manner, so no community was left out. I think we need to go back to that, and the people had a lot of pride.
I agree.
Because they would walk around to see if their community looked as well as a community in another area, maybe where there were more affluent homes. You couldn't tell when you looked at the streets. Now, we have areas that look like dumps, and I hate to say it like that, but nobody picks up the trash. The trash is over in the streets and everything else. That's a bad image. So I concur with you that we need to really address that.
We clear? Mr. Vice Mayor?
With respect to grass cutting, I'd like us to actively get with the sheriff and find out what kind of work I...
With him.
We need him. He's going to come tonight and talk about this issue, so we need to have some sort of a plan.
Okay. All right. Brandon, anything else?
Please, my report.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. The next item that we had was some conversation regarding the courthouse project that we just dedicated the other week. There was a little bit of question in terms of the paving or the pavement, so we wanted to take a minute to address that. Mr. Wright, is it Mr. Wright and Mr. Holt, or just Mr. Wright? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. As I understand it, there were some issues with questions about the integrity of the court parking lot. I was able to confirm with some of our inspection staff this afternoon that the only thing they saw with the existing court facility, some minor cracks and the cuts where the utilities were installed. We did seal coat the parking lot. That seal coat basically gives you a uniform parking lot, and it also provides some additional protection from all your wear and tear. It'll extend the life of your pavement by approximately eight to 10 years, but there were no structural issues with the existing parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Do we have a guarantee on the parking lot in any way, if something does happen? I mean, is it, does it have a life term, like an air conditioning unit would?
Guaranteed.
I guess not a guarantee, but...
By asphalt.
If something would happen...
Somehow, like...
Not by asphalt. I wouldn't think asphalt.
I'd be surprised.
Yes.
You can't even get concrete guaranteed.
A couple of things. I think what you've heard our inner-city engineers say is structurally, you don't have anything that looks like it would compromise it. You put a sealant over it that's going to extend the life expectancy of it from current standards. The second thing I'd mention is we probably need to go back and recognize we financed a unique deal. Number one, your parking lot is fine. If you were talking about an independent contractor, you know, but remember, a couple things come to play. You built a $70, $80 million facility, which you actually had some unique financing, where you're actually spending your capital dollars over a period of time. If we think about the first tranche of debt or monies that were secured to build a facility, remember, we did not pay any interest on that money at all. So the developer of the project actually withheld that interest, recognizing that they were going to get that money paid at the end. If that's a couple million dollars, remember, then the unique... If that's a couple million dollars, remember, then the unique financing of the deal is such that you've got a parking lot that is structurally sound, won't be compromised. The slurry seal or the coating that they put on it was really to make everything look fresh, once they removed all the construction debris and material and equipment. So I think you've probably got, short of, knock on wood, is there a warranty that says it lasts two years, five years, and that you could go after a manufacturer? Kind of by the court order, we are the manufacturer. So we did buy the farm when we put it in.
So the only thing we could have done, I guess that could have been done, is to run the utilities before you paid for the first time. And not have to, and wouldn't have to go back and cut and patch.
Yeah.
So, but guess what I'm hearing? The patches are as good as what it would have been, so the patches won't, they're going to last, they're going to last as long as they would have lasted anyway.
Sorry, excuse me. There was existing parking lot there, and when you add it on to the building, you need to run additional utilities to service that building.
Yeah, but you can see out there, if you walk, you can see where it was patched and cut, where there's two different sets of new, a new pavement. So something will happen after the first pavement. All I'm saying is, we should have done all that before we paid it the first time. Then we would have had one nice, smooth parking lot without the dips and the cuts and the paste. I mean, it's done now, and so it's done now, but the fact remains is, if all had been done up front, we wouldn't be able to walk out there and point the patches out, because Councilman Edmonds and I actually walked the lot. So okay to tell them we walked the lot?
Oh, yeah. We walked.
Walked the lot last Thursday, Friday, last week, and counted the patches and looked at them and tried to figure out why it wasn't one big smooth, like the beautiful lot at St. Mark Baptist Church in comparison, but...
Separation church estate.
It is. But I understand what you're saying, but our concern was, these patches, my concern was, these patches going to crack in two to three years, and we're going to have to spend extra money to redo what. So you're telling me that they're not? So I hope I'm still here.
That what you're saying?
They should not.
Okay.
So I hope I'm still here in three years, and we're going to talk about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, I'll add the disclaimer, have a major nor'easter, a horrible winter, where the soil is permeable, and it goes in and it expands, you will have issues. So let's all be on record, so we all understand the bigger picture.
That's what any asphalt, that's what any...
Good disclaimer there, but Mr. Pete, it's...
But that's a side different fact.
Speaking, while we're on the subject of the courthouse, by the way, I thought this ceremony, and I only went to the public one, couldn't make the other one, but I thought it was a beautiful ceremony, well-attended, all the speeches were good, you know, just a very good feeling. With that said, I was standing there, and that particular day, for some reason, I had left my watch at home. That doesn't happen often. So I looked all around me for a clock, knowing how important time is in a courthouse, because I believe if you're late for your hearing, a couple of those judges might not like that. So I guess, Mr. Manager, my question is, can that wall, that centerpiece wall, look like it'd be a good place for a clock? I don't know if there's money left in the budget, but if a clock could be strategically placed somewhere in there, I think it would serve the public very well. Just a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
While we're talking about the courthouse, I was talking to the chief judge. He said it's not wired for basic cable. Could we look at that and find out what it would cost, and put some basic cable in there for the judges, and also, he could help us during an emergency, that building is so huge.
It goes the parking lot.
You couldn't call anybody together, but you could reverse the television sets to have people to know, get out of the building. Could help us.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
You got all that, Mr. Manager. I see you're still writing.
You got it. I got you. So is this called a courthouse renovation?
Sounds like it.
Parking lot, a clock.
He's trying to get the clock from here.
That's all we have.
That's it? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to tell the manager that we, I've taken a lot of people past the parking lot, past courthouse, show it to them, that are not from here, and they're just fascinated and overwhelmed with the magnificence of our courthouse.
Councilmembers, are there any liaison reports at this time?
Let me, actually, as going around now, I had the great opportunity today to address the Virginia Port Authority at their monthly meeting. What I have that I'm handing out is two things. I was able to address them, as well as the Virginia Maritime Association, and it was a very interesting meeting. We actually took along our resolution that we passed and presented it to each one of the board members, and pretty much in the comments here that I have, we're reiterating some of the things, or a lot of the things that we discussed. What's also attached there is a survey that was done by the Virginia Maritime Association, and they're going to actually post this on their website tomorrow. It was so interesting, some of this data that they had collected with their members and some of their polling, that I asked, could we get an advanced copy, so I could give it to you tonight? And most of it is pretty self-explanatory, but I think there's one item there that they highlighted actually at the meeting. If you turn the page, it looks like three of 11 that says, generally speaking, are you for or against this proposed change in the operations of the state-owned terminal? And you can see only 13 was for it, 60 was against it, and 11 stated that they needed more information. So, but again, so I thought this was important to bring and drop off, so we did, but it was a very good meeting. And again, the chairman started the meeting off with some very cautious comments that tried to later arrest any rumors or any of those other things about being rushed and all of those things. I thought he did an excellent job, and actually, when I got up to give my brief comments and hand out our resolution, I thanked him for those, for making those statements, because again, it is extremely important in times like this that the facts, and only the facts are out there and considered, and people don't clog that up with a lot of things that just aren't true. So with that, I thought that was important to get that. But the Maritime Association has, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Oh, we need one more there. Okay. And so again, there is a collaborative effort. There are probably four or five different groups within this region who are looking very hard at this and have some questions and some concerns, and so it's kind of, again, I think I mentioned this before, it's kind of good to see from a regional perspective that there are quite a few entities looking and asking some of the same similar questions. Mr. Oakesman was there with me. Have I left anything else, sir, or?
No, sir. That's a good summary. I think the only thing that I would add is that APM today submitted some revisions to its initial proposal. Those revisions don't affect Portsmouth and our immediate concerns, but I've received a number of private assurances from key players in the process that our concerns will be addressed. We're not there yet. Obviously, we need to be very vigilant, particularly about the revenue issue for Portsmouth, but I'm cautiously optimistic that those concerns will be addressed.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to add on?
Thank you, Mayor. This is good information.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, you have a motion for closed meeting.
I move we go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, that's 3711A1, to discuss appointments by the city council. The subject matter of the meeting is to discuss the qualification of candidates for appointment to boards and commission. Purpose of the meeting is to permit confidential discussion of candidates.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Heretic?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?